It is now 7:06. And I will call the meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, item one, the TIF update and the Park study report. We're going to actually do a report only a few hours ago.
Steve, you're gonna have to yell.
Yeah, I just, we're deferring item number one to district discussion. And he had noted that the report had come in today, so it does not give council enough time to look over. Okay, any other adjustments? Okay, hearing and seeing done. The next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Seconded. Moving seconded, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those there, be seconded by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item four, this is the city clerk and treasurer report.
Yep, just a few things, a continuing reminder that there is information on the town, on the city website with regards to town meeting stuff. Offices that are up for election. As of right now, nominating petitions and consent forms are still required. The legislature has passed a bill waiving nominating petitions. It's Senate Bill 223, but it has not yet been signed by the governor, and so it is not yet law. So if you are considering running for office at the moment, you still need to collect signatures on a nominating petition. Petitions are due this coming Monday by five o'clock, along with consent of candidate forms. As soon as that bill is signed, all that will be required is consent forms, but at this stage of the game, it's not the law. So I cannot accept just consent forms at this stage. If you want to keep checking with me, I will let you know as soon as I hear otherwise. I will also make sure that the information gets updated on the website, gets sent out on Front Porch Forum as soon as we know that the governor has signed the bill. That is also true for Senate Bill 222, which is emergency open meeting law changes. It has been approved by the council, or by the legislature. It has not yet been signed for the governor. It was actually just sent to him today. This is particularly important for those people who are parts of public bodies like the council or any of our committees. At the moment, you are still required to have a physical location. You can't do just virtual meetings. I've been telling committees all day today, no, you can't do that when they've been sending out warnings saying, we're gonna meet tonight and it's gonna be all virtual. No, it's not. So again, we will make sure to spread the word as soon as the governor has signed that bill. There's no reason to believe they won't get signed, but at the moment, they are not law. I mentioned last week that we had put the postcards in the mail for absentee ballots. And we know exactly when people started to get them, which was on Thursday, because the phone has been ringing nonstop. So we have taken so far about 250 requests for ballots for the whole year. So it's certainly serving the same purpose that it did last year. We're getting lots of requests, which is great. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that you may recall that the city voters approved charter changes last year. That bill is in the legislature as House Bill 444. Senate Government Operations was actually scheduled to take that up this afternoon, but then they pulled it from their schedule. I have reached out to the committee chair, telling her that I would love to be available to answer questions when they do take it up. So hopefully it is moving forward.
So as noted, we have a provision in there for the possible, that position will still be on the ballot.
Yep.
Because it has.
Right now, yeah. And there's no chance that it would get, that it will get passed and signed into law before Monday's deadline. So that's all I have.
Counselor, I see your end is up.
Yep, what's the chances, do you think, Carol, to get those two bills passed?
Was that the end of your sentence?
I'm sorry, the ones regarding the COVID.
They are, they are, the legislature, they're waiting for the governor's signature. They're not law until the governor signs them.
Let me rephrase the question. What, what's, what do you think the chances are that he's gonna sign it? That's what I meant, I'm sorry, I didn't.
They, there, there's virtually no chance that he won't sign them. Cancel out your double negatives there. They will get signed, it's just a question of when. The one that would waive nominating petitions was sent to him on Friday. It will become law this coming Friday, whether he signs it or not, unless he vetoes it. So that one will likely become law. The open meeting law bill was only sent to him today. So, you know, it could be a week if he just lets it become law without his signature. You can't ever count 100% on any of that stuff. You, you have to behave as you're waiting for them to be fully enacted. So, and you certainly can't change your process until they are fully enacted.
Similar to the Yoschelaw, you know, we gotta abide by it, it's a form. I'm sure you should know a little bit, but it's one of those items that we abide by the rules until the rules change.
Yeah, I didn't hear what you just said, but I'm, I was just curious. I know that both Erica and I are safe.
Yeah, yeah, so as I said, if you're, I spoke to someone today who's collecting signatures on a petition. I told them that at this stage of the game, they're still, I'm still collecting signatures on my petition. And to just keep checking with me over the next couple of days. Certainly the hope is that the governor signs it, the waiver of the nominating petitions sooner rather than later. And if you're part of a committee that thinks that they can go ahead and hold all virtual meetings, you are wrong. Not until it's been signed into law, so.
Any other questions for the clerk or treasurer? Hearing and seeing none, moving on to liquor control.
Nothing.
And straight on to the city managers' report.
Yeah, I just have a couple of verbal additions. The first is for the folks listening in the audience, the campaign season is starting, as you've just heard. This is when the yard signs proliferate on city property or in city right-of-way, city hall park, comedians. Island traffic outlets, they are not allowed by ordinance. So city staff will remove them as quickly as we can. Once we see them, they'll be stored over at the city barn. But most importantly is just try to get the message out, don't, don't put them up on city property, city right-of-way. You can put them up on private property, private lawns and whatever, but not on city right-of-way.
So then just for one clarification, city also means school property, correct?
Interesting question. I guess, actually, it's not city property, the school property is not city property.
But.
I mean, if it's a will of the council.
I mean, we can follow up and just make sure, but I believe the assignment spotted on the very city elementary school property, so the question had come up.
But that's under the control of the Unified Development School District and not city.
I guess I would, unless somebody.
And there is statute that, that allows these kinds of signs for a limited period of time before an election. So that might be something that runs counter to our, to our ordinances. So I can find a legal opinion as to whether it applies to school.
I guess put this way, until we get that opinion, it says it is.
Yeah, it's normally like two, in, in New Hampshire, I think it's two weeks. Some states, it's two days. But I know that there is a statute that gives that.
Yeah, I've heard, I think there is a statute. I thought it was 45 days though, but I might be completely off the ballpark on that.
But it does also apply to state rights in way. So like around Route 62, you can't put signs up there either, so.
Yeah, but we can't remove them.
Right.
That's state property.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, if the state statute says that you can have those signs up, I don't know if our, I think our city ordinance would not override state statute.
So I don't believe that you can have signs in the state right-of-way. I believe they have a 14-day, similar to what we have. Counselor, Eric?
Yeah, I was just curious, what's the reference for the state statute that is, that you're talking about?
I don't have it in front of me yet.
Okay, well, I do, I pulled up the Unified Development Regulations and at least Berry City's law. And, and I think, you know, it's pretty clear and, and we should all, you know, try to follow our own laws that, that the city council establishes. And that's the political campaign signs should not be displayed more than one month prior, two or more than one week following an election or vote. Should not be located within a public right-of-way or mounted on a utility pole. Be more than six square feet in area or more than four, four feet in height. So it sounds like that's all consistent with, with some of the other states' laws that have been mentioned. But it would be good to know if there is a state law and, and our ordinance is in conflict with it, that, that conflict be cured.
And I know I have one other update for the council, the strategic planning proposals review. I met with the UTE yesterday, hopefully to jumpstart the process again. We'll complete it, so that recommendation will be on the February 1st.
So any questions for the managers? So the only other question I have, Counselor Eric?
Yeah, I was just curious if, if there've been quotes for the speed indicator signs yet.
I spoke with Billy Hearn this morning. I told him to, yes, we have quotes. I believe the quotes, the most effective one was the basis for the allocation that we made in the fund balance list, the fiscal year 21 fund balance list. I directed Bill to get those ordered, hopefully today, so.
Thank you.
I confirm tomorrow, whether they do.
Yeah, hopefully they'll be up before time meeting day. Yeah, depends on the, the ordering time for sure. So question for those on Zoom, Tony is here, he has readjusted the microphones, are we better?
No.
No.
Hello.
Okay, okay, well, but you can still hear me because you answered the question, so that's a good sign.
Even you're speaking loudly, so.
So you can hear me, you can hear Carol, you just can't hear Steve?
Yes.
So maybe there's an issue with that microphone? Do you want to try it together?
They're not pulling from the microphone, it's pulling from the owl. There are no microphones that are active.
No, so we're all just being picked up from the owl, it's just that you and I are being louder.
Okay.
Just a real quick update, the mixer is picking you all up, every microphone's hot. When I plug into that unit, it's, I'm picking up your audio from all those microphones.
Okay, well, we'll just have Steve speak louder to guess, just one, two, three.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you through the owl.
Michael, as Tony just noted, all the microphones are picking up audio, so it's not through the owl.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just stating it's coming from the owl, that's all.
Neither here nor there, so you can hear us and we're, we're gonna move on. So anything for visitors and communication?
Hi, thank you. I'm trying to raise my hand, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to let people know, because I've read some folks saying that they're having difficult times, that the food bank will be having a veggie van go, which is going to be at the BOR on January 28th. It happens once a month, and it's from nine to 10:30 in the morning. And people may go up there and pick up fruits, vegetables, and protein foods that are given away. There's no sign up, you don't have to qualify, there's, you don't have, there's no hat tricks. And if there are people that you know who are unable to get there, or who maybe are working, just let me know and I'll see what I can do. We have had some volunteers through the Berry Mutual Aid, and we used to deliver to about 15 families before. And I'd be happy to help set up something like that again, the same if people are having food issues. We can help if they're unable to get to Capstone and, and pick up food there. And people who are over 60, there are some programs through the food bank, and we could also help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items for visitors and communications? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. There is no old business, and we noted that 9A was deferred, so we'll be moving on to new business. 9B, this is the second quarter FY22 budget status report, and we have Dawn, who was our finance director, on the top.
Yes, good evening. So I had provided you a financial update in the packet that was actuals through December 29th. So that meant we're 50% through the fiscal year. And at that time, and using that as a baseline, our general fund revenues were running ahead of budget at 57% or roughly 7.3 million. And our general fund expenditures are running slightly below that baseline at 48%. I notated throughout the report, specific line item, or specific departments that were running ahead of that 50% baseline. And the substantiated reason why, most of it was all due to timing. And the other piece of the, the update I was gonna say was, I could not provide the enterprise fund budgets this time, because we haven't had time to reconcile them since it closed. I think their last collection was the third, but then for timely deposits, it didn't get done until like January 6th. So there was a lag time between then and me putting my report together. I'd be happy to come back and give you an update on that when I have had a chance to breathe on that. And in terms of expenditures, I, in the general fund, you know, there is some savings due to vacancies that are part of that number that you would see, the fund balance that we're currently holding. And we are also able to recognize savings from the pool staff that we had this year. I believe we had budgeted $26,000 roughly, and Stephanie was able to get us the grant. Summers Matters, and that covered all of the pool staff, so that was savings completely to the bottom line. Is there any specific questions I can answer on that update?
So just related to that, as we're looking forward for FY23, that pool grant, that's not something that's reoccurring, so we should be continuing to expect that that'll increase?
That's correct, I think it is something we can apply for again, but it's not guaranteed.
And the other item that is always a question is about the salt legend. We had now our second big storm, right now, this isn't one of those that are really a salt event, this is more of a pile of it. But does that still look like it's still within budget?
It's really too early to say, I mean, we got the worst of the weather coming.
Yeah, I would agree with Steve's statement. Just to date, where, when I ran this report as a 1229, we only had $18,000 of expenditures out of a $180,000 budget. So it's clearly too early to tell on that.
Yeah, I have a couple of other comments. I checked what Bonnie broke today, six months into the year, our ambulance revenues are running on the positive side. The average of the months that, five, six months, it's about $483,000. Dawn, were you gonna say something?
Can you just speak up?
The microphones are hot, you gotta speak loud so the owl can pick you up, Steve.
But aren't they supposed to pick us up for the, for the television, for the Zoom?
We, we are, but I have no idea all the settings, the audio is going through there. And the mixer is picking you all up.
So let me just test one, two, three, four. I think you're just gonna have to project that.
Yeah, that's better.
All right, so the, the comment I made is that the ambulance revenue is running ahead of budget by about $23,000. Our budget is $450,000. The first six months is averaging $483,000. Not to go to the bank on that, but again, the ambulance revenue is running on the positive side. I think the other comment I'd make is that, as Dawn notes, that expenses at this point in time, or at the mid-year point, are 48%. So that 2% underrun translates to about $200,000 in savings at this point. Again, I'm not suggesting we run to the bank with that number. It provides us a little bit of comfort level if we have some unexpected expenditures or unbudgeted expenditures that we manage them wisely. But what it also means is that it looks like we're on the right side of the bottom line and a very good financial position halfway through the year.
So another note for council, we did authorize two expenditures. We haven't exactly said where it's going yet, but those are the strategic planning RFP and the software that goes with it. Those are items that would come out of this budget, so think of that, the 200,000, it's already being whittled down a little bit, so just so that you're aware. Any other questions about the FY22 budget? Okay, well, hearing done, thank you, Dawn, and I'm thankful that we're on the right side of things.
Yes.
Moving on, we're at item C. We are not at item C, because that's one for eight o'clock. So I'll move on to item D. This is to act on the Rotary Club request for revised wheel lock building lease. And we have Tony here with us.
Wearing two hats.
Wearing two hats.
Before we start on that, I asked Rick just to always test out the audio clip it before the meeting. And that way, if there's any glitches, we can react to it fast. All the microphones are hot, the mixer's working, that box is working. I'm not sure if it's that right here.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll talk with her tomorrow.
It's, yeah, put me on the speakerphone, and this is why I have gray hair, because people do watch your meetings.
So to note that on CCTV, you might have a different sound quality than that if this was used for Zoom, so.
It didn't work last week, it's, it's always worked. You remember the time I came back here and crawled across the floor, because the microphone setting was off? So we're all matching. Something that I got troubleshoot.
I'm good, I'll, I'll get you with her tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just have to volunteer at 8:30 and then I have a 11 o'clock meeting. Okay. Now let's move on to the Rotary Act.
Oh, okay, well, I, I put this on the agenda because I think in November, maybe earlier, the council directed that we execute a lease with the Rotary Club for their use of the wheel lock buildings. So I modeled the lease out of the police or the very partnership, which among other things, has an insurance requirement and incorporated a pavement of a third of the utilities, water, sewer, power. The club has had a chance to review that lease and wants to request the council to reconsider that lease in terms of a no-cost lease due to the virtual.
Steve, you're gonna have to speak up.
So the Rotary Club has asked the council to reconsider the lease and change the terms to a no, no-cost lease. I think with that, I'll turn over to Tony.
Yes, back in 2020, DCF came and spoke to Rotary about how they remove children in the middle of the night. And they, some of these children only have clothes on their back, and they have no storage space to store the stuff. And so at the time, Rotary President John Steinman sat on the council. And so we convened over at the Wheelock House with DCF and some other organizations, and we talked about their needs. They need diapers, small children clothing, even teenagers, and they have no storage. And then Tracy gave us a tour of the second floor. Now, how many people here on the council have been on the second floor of the Wheelock House? Okay. I don't expect you guys to make a decision tonight, but I really strongly recommend you go over there and take a look at that. It's one entrance, you go up a narrow pair of stairs, and we went in there, there was no heat, one light bulb, and it was just a closet. So John went back to the council and said, you know, Rotary wants to revamp that room. And put in shelves, and put in a closet, and put in a security lock with a code, so someone from DCF can go in there in the middle of the night, punch it in, and grab at their knee. And the council at the time said, sure, we'll do a handshake, a dollar a year. So Rotary pulled its resources together, and we painted it, we put shelves in there, we had people volunteering their woodworking skills, and we put that room together. Now, we have no problem paying a dollar. Our motto for Rotary is service above self. And when people ask us to step up, the Rotary Club has done it for almost, we're already celebrating 100 years in Berry in two years. As you saw with the art splash, with the wrapping of children's coats down at the Grandin Museum in November, that's what we do. And when we raise money, we don't pay ourselves. We put it into a request fund so nonprofits can come and talk to us and say, can you help us out financially? And that's what Rotary does. And so when we came back with this lease, we have one light bulb. We have no Rotarians sitting there manning this room 24/7. This room did not meet code, because it has only one entrance, so it's a non-livable room. But what we're doing is we're meeting the needs of this community for the young people. And you know with this awful, awful COVID, that more abuse is happening in all the communities across the country. And they're being overwhelmed. And when you have a child who is like one or two, being taken out at four degrees with only the clothes on their back, but they can go there and get a coat and a change of underwear, a toothbrush, a teddy bear. and a change of underwear, a toothbrush, a teddy bear. We are meeting our goals for this community. We step up for you guys because we love our community. But we cannot fulfill the obligations of this lease that was proposed to us. We financially cannot do it. We ask you to forego it. And give us a one-dollar lease. It will continue our support for these children. Thank you. Sorry.
Counsel, is there any questions from counsel? Pastor Stockwell?
So have you talked to Capstone about space at Capstone?
They're overwhelmed. And this was done in twenty twenty. And, you know, all we do is just get clothes and put it in there. We never, we never dreamed of someone from our community saying, you need to charge Rotary for this room. It wasn't our game plan. Our game plan is to help the children. And that's why we wrapped in November a hundred and twenty children's coats and mittens and wrapped them so they can get them. So if you want us to remove us from that building, yes, we will step up the cause to find a new location. But I think it behooves you to embrace this in supporting the mission that you have and what these service clubs have in our communities.
Pastor Booton? Michael?
Yeah, you know, I I think we should continue with the the lease that we previously had. No, no cost.
Counsel, was Zach? Is your hand up too?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Booton. This is not. I I think Tony said it very well. It's not as if there, this isn't an office space for them. This isn't some, a place where like someone's camping out and using it to fulfill a job. It's basically a drop-in annex. It's basically a storage unit, non-intents and purposes. And and the the cause that it's fulfilling is much more than just a storage unit. But in terms of practical use, that's basically what it is. So I'm fine with the keeping the status quo.
So I'll make that motion then. And I I will make a comment about the stairs going up there. I feel like the last time I was in that building, I looked at those stairs and thought to myself, I don't fit, and I didn't go up. I feel like that's what happened, but I might be wrong.
Okay, Counsel, Shonda.
One of the things that strikes me when you're talking is that I think I didn't understand at the time the relationship between Rotary and the city and how much given there is on the part of Rotary that helps the city. So I too support letting the lease go.
Linda Kuchar, is your hand up?
I just want to say that I am, you know, I am a foster parent, and I can't thank you enough for this, being able to utilize that space to store stuff when people are in need, and we can have access to it at any time.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Stockwell?
As much as I support serving DCF, I think we can't afford Wheelock. I suppose that's a different conversation. We can't afford to rent buildings that don't date ourselves. But given that, whatever these circumstances, that's what we're doing, it will be committed for the future and added support.
So and Mr. Manager, just to know, we're still looking at that same lease period that runs through.
If it's the will of the council to.
Oh, so sorry. I'll second Michael's motion.
If it's the will of the council to grant the request, I expect that what you would want me to do is just redraft the lease and open it for a dollar without the insurance requirements. And just have the formality of the lease document that acknowledges their huge building.
Any other discussion? So we will formally know Counselor Booton had a motion and Counselor Wasak had a second. Basically, it's accepting the recommendation of the manager for the lease agreement. Any further discussion? Bernadette?
I couldn't hear what Counselor Stockwell said. Could she repeat it, please?
Oh, sorry. I just said that I think we can't afford the Wheelock Building. The city should put up the sale stipulations. However, as long as we're not doing that, this is the worry caused to support at minimum. Cars, very little of the city to support us.
Don't, don't talk into your microphone. It doesn't work. Speak to that microphone.
Or speak to me. I can't hear you.
Bern, were you able to hear that? Okay. Okay, so with.
Yeah, with the masks on, Lucas, or Mayor Herring, with the masks on and being so far away from the owl, it is difficult to hear. Everybody's having the problem and we I guess what it is what it is. But anyway.
Okay, Linda, your hand is up. Is that still up or do you have another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. The comment is, this isn't, I don't know if somebody's getting confused that think that it's actually DCF that they're using the space for. The majority of the people that are that are in there is a limited number of actual foster parents who go in there to help it out. It's not actually the DCF staff.
So the access to the building, and Tony, you can confirm that probably, that the people that have the coats into the building, it's not DCF staff, it's actually the foster parents or.
And it's the people they identify that need access to that room.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Booton?
This is not about this item. Is it possible to move the owl closer to you guys?
I'll see that right now, okay?
That's what he did.
Okay, can you, can you hear us now? Yes.
I'll walk around with it. I'll be like.
Pointing at people.
I really did not realize I had a face.
We digress. Okay, any any other questions related to the lease agreement? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, moving on then.
I just, I just want to say thank you so much for your support. And I just want to remind people in the community, please donate even the young teenagers clothing. Because they, they are, they also are removed. So if you've got toys or whatever, please put them in that closet. Everyone have a nice night, and I'll get this problem solved.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you for coming, Tony.
Of course.
Right, Tony.
Adios.
Okay, Counsel, moving on to the next item, which is still stuck with the discussion on the usage of the Wheelock Building. It had my name next to it. I had noted that we would bring it back at this meeting when we were having the discussion previously. I don't have a recommendation. That's why you don't see anything in the packet. We have tried several different things in the past. So if council has a direction that they want to lead, lead one way or another, we've had the discussion of selling the building, we've had the discussion of renting out the building. There's been a lot of discussion around it. So tonight, if you have any historical questions, I can gladly add to that. But it would really be a discussion of council on how they would like to see us proceed moving forward. Counselor Booton?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's no, no surprise where I stand on the issue with the Wheelock Building. I don't think we should sell it. I think it's a historical building that is a treasure to our community. And I think that having the partnership is in there is a, an excellent thing to have in there. They're on Main Street. It's a nice little building for them. And I also think, and I'm going to get some heat for this comment, but I've already said it before. I think that the BADC should be in there as well. I think the synergy the two community organizations have would be great together in that building. And that's where I stand on the Wheelock Building. And I'll say that our community does not support selling it. There might be like a very few contingent of people that support it. I I think that if we were to put it on the ballot, I think that it would, it would be passed unanimously to to keep the building within our, within our possession.
Counsel Wasak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with Counselor Booton, and I have also been consistent in not selling it. That is a, a defining building in the Berry City downtown. That is a building that helps make Berry City downtown what it is. And I just, quite frankly, do not trust the private sector to keep it that way. There's a whole bunch of rules we could put in the lease or deed, and there's a lot we could do, but there's no other way to guarantee that that building stays the way it is in downtown other than the city to maintain ownership. I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea of BADC. I know there was a chat, a question in the chat, what is BADC? It's the Berry Area Development Corporation. They're an economic development organization that benefits greater Berry. And of course, the Berry Partnership is in there as well. But I also agree with Counselor Stockwell that the current situation isn't working in the best way. If we were to have the partnership and the BADC in there, for example, the city, I would not want the city to be subsidizing any of the utilities like they do now, for example. So that's a conversation that I am open to having, but I am absolutely opposed to selling it.
Counsel Real?
So if if we did keep it open, I would actually like it to see more of a place where tourists can go. I remember there was talks about in the past that it would be more open to tourists and be of a more informational spot and have it staffed for a place where people can get information. And if that were to happen, it would need to be have a lot of accessibility. The ramp, for example, out front is not accessible for people. It does not meet ADA requirements. And there's probably a lot more things that need to be fixed and renovated. And I'm just wondering if there's actually money to make it more accessible and user-friendly to the, to the public than it is now. But right now, as it stands, there is a lot of renovations that need to be done if we were to keep it open. And again, I would, if we did use it, we are not using the building to the best way that we can possibly. So there's a lot of things to think about if we were to keep it open. And again, I don't think we're using the building to the best way we can.
To the one question about funds for utilizing it for with ADA accessibility, we did have a USDA grant process that we were looking into. The original grant process, it said that for some reason it wasn't submitted adequately. That's one of those, we must not have checked all the boxes. But that grant is still available. So if counsel wanted to look into that, we could have that as part of the action tonight if so desired.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mayor. But I'm just thinking if people are going to access the front of the building and not the back of the building, because you're going to have blocking traffic. I know that the original grant was to fix the back of the building, but the front of the building might be the place you might want to look at where to modify the ramp. Because you are going to have, you know, if you want tourists downtown, looking at the building, they're going to want to go to the front of the building and not the back of the building. And again, I apologize for this cutting you off.
No, that's fine. And it's a good clarification. I know in the past it was because the conversation was, the Berry Partnership was in the front and the teen center concept was in the back. And it would have been a requirement for the teen center to have a ramp. And their entrance would have been separate from the Berry Partnership. So that's why the back entrance was looked for in that case. So this would be a different scenario. And that's why the front wouldn't necessarily, would be necessary for that type of situation. Counsel Shonda?
I agree with the sentiment of keeping the building as within the city's, what would I say, umbrella? I don't know if this is the right question, but how much money are we losing on that building on a regular basis?
Well, it's the it's the cost of the utility, I think effectively, essentially. It's, it's the cost of the utilities, and I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head what that is. Periodically, there's maintenance required, but I think the heating system is in reasonably good shape. So you know, it's not, it's not like there's dead on the building or anything like that.
Right. But in terms of, I mean, does it, it sounds like the second floor is kind of a disaster zone? Am I misinterpreting that?
Let's, let's be clear about the Wheelock Building. The Wheelock Building is, and I'm not, I'm not an advocate for selling a building, so don't misunderstand my comments. But the Wheelock Building is probably seeing the highest and best use it can see right now, even if we could get somebody else in there. It's not prime retail space. It's not prime commercial space. There's a lot higher quality office space that's going lacking in the city. It's the, as Eric pointed out, accessibility is an issue. If, if the city is going to try to deal with that, then we are going to have to make that investment, whether it be by grant or city funds. It's not like we haven't tried to get a higher and better use of that building in the past. At one time, we, we had the antique shop in there, I'll call it the Pierre Kuchar's place. He, he ran that for a couple of years, but that was for a very nominal amount of rent. So it's, it's not like there's a lot of people out there who are looking to go into the Wheelock. It's just, that's just the fact of that building. It's old. It's not up to standards. It's not attractive for a retail or commercial operation in order for the city to make it so it would require a substantial investment. So it's a that's a situation.
Yeah, and just to add to the knowledge of the building, I think it would be great for anyone that hasn't taken a tour of that building to go over. And I'm sure if you can contact Tracy Lewis, who does work out of that building to get a tour. The, the front of the building is actually like an old house. So all it is is a stairwell that goes up to a second floor. It's about the size of one-third of the building in the front. And then over time, there's been additions on it. So when the Berry Senior Center was in the back, that whole area with the kitchen and then another space in the, in the back area. So there is some history to it. I mean, some people have talked about ripping off those back sections and just keep the little house-looking piece. So, you know, if we were to have further conversations, we would also want to know what condition do you want that building in at the point of sale, if that's what you're looking for? So Counsel Stockwell, you had your hand up, and then I'll go back to the Zoom.
It seems to me it will cost a lot to fix it up. It will, it will keep the city in a landlord position. It will keep the city trying to maintain that building and trying to look for people who properly use it. I do trust a business company. I do trust the private sector, particularly if we put in stipulations. It's a great-looking building from the outside. I think someone who's in the private sector could develop. We should at least give that the opportunity. So the building remains in the downtown, remains an attractive place, but it's actually used and it's not on the city rules. And we're not spending money to maintain a half-empty building that we can't afford to fix up. And also, just since it's a lot of, it would take so much work. There's so many things that need to happen in the city. There's so many things that we want to do. There's so many infrastructure projects. And we're going to do this house. But I don't know. It just doesn't seem to be the good use of our time, our energy, and certainly our money.
Counsel Booton?
So I've already spoken once. I will let Counselor Hemrick go, and then I'll go after him.
Counsel Hemrick?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Booton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Booton. I, I think Counselor Stockwell and I often agree, and I agree with her on this point, although I, I think this would be a conversation that would be better done with some type of a report on, on the status of the building. Like, you know, what hazards are there? Are there, is there knob and tube? Is there lead? Is there asbestos? Is there mold? Are there any air quality issues? What's going on with the building? Let's see what the numbers are for operational and capital costs every year. I mean, we know what the operational costs are, but it looks like there's a lot of delayed maintenance on that building. We know it's not ADA compliant. It's not. It, it, it's, it seems like, well, and there's been a lot of discussions before, but it seems like we could make a better decision if we had more of that data. And I, and I really love the idea of having a co-located community development and planning office. I think this is one of those issues where if we had a staff, more in-house city capacity in planning community development, they could do that type of work. They could put that report together. They could make some recommendations, consider preferred alternatives. And then it's not just kind of, you know, shooting ideas back and forth and spitballing at a council, at a council meeting. And, and there could be potential merits to, to having nonprofits in that building. And for instance, a nonprofit can be an applicant for Vermont tax credits. And like, you know, B A D C and Partnership could bounce from vacant building to vacant building, getting tax credits, rehabbing them, getting a new commercial occupant in there and revitalizing downtown. So there are some interesting opportunities when you have a nonprofit in, in a building. But I, but I, but I think there's an op, I'd like to see what the opportunities are in terms of selling it, maintaining, what would that look like? Maintaining the historic facade and, and getting something on the tax roll or, or really getting the reinvestment that needs to happen to, to make the highest and best use of that, that building, which I suspect is going to be pretty, pretty expensive and add to the, the taxes in this community. And it seems like, you know, it's already adding quite a bit to our tax rate right now.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah. Again, no to selling it. But, you know, we talked about the landlord, us being, you know, renting it out to a nonprofit. And I, I understand that B A D C and the Partnership are nonprofits. However, they are nonprofits with specific ties to the city. And we're not talking about some nonprofit that does not get a significant amount of their budget. You know, we're talking about organizations that get a significant amount from our budget. And that's, that's the reason why I support that position. I would not be overly excited about having a nonprofit that, you know, employs people and they're, it, it just having the landlord tenant situation, it's not the same as what we got for the Rotary, which is they're using it for a storage area. When you start having a nonprofit down there that wants to use it for whatever purposes, you, you have to, you have to be a little concerned about what their requirements are going to be, how much of a difficult tenant are they going to be? And I just, I, I like the, I like the fact that we rent, we rent it out, for lack of a better term, to our, our partner, which is the Partnership, and would love to see the B A D C down there as well.
Counselor Wasn't that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Counselor Booton and I have talked about this many times over the years, it feels like. And I do, I agree with him and I disagree with him. I agree with him, and I've told him this, about selling the building. I do not want to sell the building. I'm not interested in selling the building. And I'm not typically a line in the sand type of counselor, but I'm just a no on selling the building. But I do not have concerns about other nonprofits moving in and us being a land, because like, we, we, yes, they have a special relationship to a city. We're a landlord now for the Berry Partnership. That's just, I understand what you're saying, Michael, about the special relationship they have with the city, which is accurate. But I don't have concerns about getting another nonprofit in there. I don't have concerns. I think the manager's right in that it's not a primary retail space, but I wouldn't have concerns about using it as a retail space under the control of the city. Besides conflict of interest, things like that, but just as an example. Or offices, what have you. I'm not opposed to getting a report. I'm not opposed to asking for proposals, et cetera. But I will just say, I feel like we've had this conversation every six to nine months since I first been elected to the council. And, you know, if I were somebody objectively looking as to whether or not that building is a good opportunity for me as the executive director of a nonprofit. Town Meeting Day happens and the council wants to talk about it again, and then it's a one-year lease because Michael and I are both gone and everyone wants to sell it. So I would just say before council goes down yet another path with the Wheelock House, which I'm open to, and I'm always willing to listen to ideas. We've been down this road before. And I think just point of clarification, the costs to the city of the Wheelock House are revenue loss because it's not taxed fully or at all. Defer, deferred maintenance, and we paid, I believe, two thirds of the utilities. I believe the Partnership pays a third. And the city pays the other two thirds. So those are the costs. And that is real, and that is something that we have to contend with, which is why I don't necessarily have the objections Counselor Booton has to charging rent, for example, or something like that. But I am not in favor of selling the place.
So just to, no other information, we, we talked about being a landlord. We also have the Civic Center Building where we do rent out space to people at another location. One thing that has never come up is about, I don't think, we've talked about moving the building. So for example, if there was some other project that would cause for downtown space that is a premium value within our downtown could be taken advantage of for other kinds of tax rates. If the love is the building itself rather than the location, then that could also be an option. But to Counselor Hemrick's point, these are all just options that we're spitballing, throwing in the air. There's really no comparative analysis on any of it. So I, I think I would suggest, I mean, we're having a conversation now. I haven't seen many people from the public weigh in on this tonight. We have had long conversations in the past. We've had people visit the building. We've had, it looks like a majority of the council that has not been in that building right now. So I think it'd be the few, with who of us to make sure that we do at least have a site visit and have some more of a, a discussion for a cost benefit on any of those scenarios. Bernadette?
Hi. Yes, I'm weighing in. Sorry, I didn't know you were waiting. I really agree with Counselor Stockwell and also Counselor Rail because building is not accessible. And I think having an evaluation of it and the circumstances around it, it's not about the partnership. And so I don't want to make this about the partnership. I think that Partnership's doing a great job and Tracy's doing a great job. But I think, I think we can do better for the Partnership and for, for Tracy. And part of my question had been, what other space do we have? I haven't been up to visit the Civic Center. And are there places there that could be developed into office space for the B A D C and for the Partnership? There's a lot of parking. It's not right downtown. But to be honest with you, when Berry City is busy, there's no place to park in the downtown to go into the Partnership or a tourist place. So you have to still go out back or find one of the city parking lots. And I think making the Civic Center be a bit of a welcoming spot for the city and possibly Partnership. It's, it's just up the hill. My kids used to walk up and down that hill when I was working in Berry City. So those are the things. And I think Counselor Hemrick's suggestion makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to note, B A D C does have a lease agreement with another place in order to be where they are. So it's not like they are in a position or looking to move to someplace right now. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Counselor Stockwell?
I just want to clarify that I think B A D C and the Partnership together are a great idea. That is terrific idea. I think it would strengthen us in the city and really enable us to do more planning together. In that building, not so much. But, you know, when the lease is up for, for the development corp, maybe they could. But I would like to, to move that we do a report on the building.
So with that, you want to put a timeframe? Because I know this is an item that continually comes up. And the only other suggestion is that make sure that council has the ability to go and visit the Wheelock Building during that time period so that they, they know what it looks like. They know what some of the downfalls are, at least can ask some of the questions to be answered as part of that report.
I would say two months.
I guess I get away with that. We don't have, I don't know if folks are looking for staffing this report or an independent property consultant or architect or whatever. I think it needs to be the latter. If that's the direction the council wants to proceed, I'd need at least several weeks to put together an RFP, probably 30 days to let somebody respond. You know, you're going to take another week or two to make a selection. So it'll, it'll take 45 days, 60 days under ideal conditions to get somebody on board. And then probably, you know, 45 days or so to actually do the report. So you're probably looking at something more like something probably around four months, I think, at the earliest.
Is there any simpler way to do that?
I'm open to suggestions.
Oops, sorry. Don't mean to jump in.
Counselor Hemrick, and then Counselor Wasn't that?
I was just thinking, you know, if we had an in-house community development planner, community development officer, I think this is something we would, we could ask them to do, and they could get inspectors down there and, and, and put together a report and have it done pretty, pretty quickly. So, you know, I, I think we, we do send what, over $120,000 to the Partnership and B A D C. And, and that, this is an opportunity for, for both organizations to, to really, to really shine and looking at, looking at that space and its condition and doing, and adding that community development capacity to, to the city.
Counselor Wasn't that?
No, I, I don't really have anything to add other than, I don't know what more of a well, yeah, never mind. I have no comment.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, we can ask the B A D C to do that instead of, you know, whatever. We can just ask the B A D C if they would be willing to do that. I'm sure that they would be willing to take that on and, and answer that question for you, Counselor Hemrick.
So what I'm hearing is a proposal for the work to be done by B A D C rather than having a consultant? Is that what you're saying, Counselor Booton?
To assess the property?
To assess the use of the property, yes. To see what should be done. What are the costs? What is the use?
I, I mean, if there's questions, specific questions that Counselor Hemrick wants to, to have answered that he would want, I would say we should get those over to B A D C. I, I don't, I don't want to sell the building and I, I'm not on that position. But I'm just saying that if we want those questions answered, I think we could just reach out to B A D C and see if they would be willing to take that on as a question.
Counselor Stockwell?
And then we'd be able to assess whether there is asbestos, whether there's lead paint, structural integrity of the building? Is that a reasonable thing to ask?
Well, if you're talking about that, then I don't think we should be doing that. If you're, if you're just talking about planning and finding out, you know, what's the best usage for that building? That's a, that's something that I think the A D C could do. B A D C isn't going to be able to do some sort, you know, any type of like asbestos, you know, checking unless they have, you know, the ability to do so through other nonprofits that are willing to come in. And maybe we could ask Cody to consider trying to get ahold of other profit, nonprofits to do that, but to give us an assessment on what the actual value of the property is for retail usage, which he's going to come back and say, it's not, but that's okay. We can certainly ask him.
So I, I think Counselor Boone, what you're making for a point is even if it was a city planner position or B A D C, there would need to be additional consulting from other organizations that have specialties in asbestos or other. Is that what you're trying to say?
I, I must be missing the original question because I, I really had nothing to say about the asbestos assessment. And I didn't realize that was part of the, the question. But yes, that is correct. We would have to go out to other, you know, other specialists to get that information, even if we had an in-house one.
So I, I actually had written a note here about approaching Cody to see if B A D C could take that on. I think instead of having counselors approach Cody, what I would ask is counselors direct your questions or whatever to me. I will coordinate with Cody. And see if they're able to undertake that. And if so, report back to the council, probably scope out an evaluation so they know what we're looking for and you know what we would get. If they're able to do that.
For process wise, I apologize, didn't clarify that. I just assumed that's how the process would go.
Mr. Lozong?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. If it would help, I think as most of you know, Karen and I own a number of development companies. We routinely and on a daily basis pursue projects in the city. So if it would help, you know, we work with environmental engineers. We work with structural engineers. We work with contractors, most of whom are local and, you know, really have an affection for the city. So if it would help and if the council could give me, you know, I'd, I'd need about 90 days. I'd be happy to contact them. I suspect that, you know, knowing the engineers and the contractors as well as I do, I suspect we could put a report together at no cost to the city. I suspect that they would willingly donate their time if, you know, if we could be given, say, Mayor, you know, 60 to 90 days to complete the report.
That's a generous, and I think that would be a great offer, and it would be for people who already have an investment in Berry City. So I think the report would carry a lot of weight and that would be great. Thank you so much for offering that.
Counselor Wasn't that?
Yeah, I was just going to say that would be great because I think that, I think B A D C would be great. But since we've like already named them as, as, as an organization that we'd potentially be interested as using the building, I wouldn't necessarily want them putting together the report about the usage of the building. And so I think I, I appreciate that offer and I think that's a great idea.
So does somebody want to formalize that as a motion?
I did have Counselor Stockwell originally made a motion to do a report on the building within the next two months. I don't know whether she.
I'd take a friendly amendment and change that to three months.
Well, we had no second, so you could reword it. You could whatever.
I move that we accept former Mayor Lozong's generous offer and, and go and have a report on the Wheelock Building within three months or so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded any further discussion? Counselor Hemrick?
I would just a question if, if it'd be possible to have also city staff pull together the costs, the operational costs of the building and any cap, any capital, known capital needs.
We can, we can pull that together pretty quickly. And that will make that as part of the motion, and that's fine if the mover is secondary. Okay. So that's added with the motion. So under discussion, Bernadette?
Hi, could we include it there, some way to make the building accessible? What would it take to make that building accessible on the front end?
Well, if, if I'm mayor, if I'm a mayor, that would likely be included in the needs assessment. So the, the needs assessment would likely address current code and how the building fails to meet current code, I believe. current code, I believe Counselor Hemrick mentioned, for example, knob and tube wiring, the existence, potential existence, we don't know if there is, of asbestos and the cost of abatement. So ma'am, that would that would be included in in a final report.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying no. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to. Is it eight o'clock? Oh, it is, it's past eight o'clock now. So the warning for the eight P M public hearing regarding the FY twenty-three general fund budget review and tentative approval. This is one for eight is now eight seventeen, noting that I think one or two people have left during that time period. We are in that one time period for the public hearing. So as part of your package, counsel, you would have had the general fund budget information. For members of the public, it is up on the website. The manager has made sure that the most recent copy is available. I'll open this up for any questions from the public that they have on the budget. I mean, yeah, if you want to give us some openings.
Yeah, yeah, so counselors, the the budget that you've seen before, you're pretty familiar with. You've been working on it for at least four months, if not longer, with the government head workshops. The only revisions to this budget that have occurred since the December eighteenth workshop, I believe it was, the second workshop, is a thirty-one hundred and fifty-five dollar reduction in the Washington County tax assessment they have set their budget. And that information came in just last week, I believe. We've also received in the last, sometime in the last month, an advisory notice from Mont Vega City and Towns. It says the practice of including an errors and admission allowance on the tax rate calculation. And in our case, we use one cent. Apparently, that's not an allowable practice. They have sent out an advisory to that extent. So by eliminating that allowance in the tax rate calculation, knocks off about a half a cent on the tax rate. So it takes the tax rate down to one point nine six percent, which is about where it was when we last talked about the budget, down to one point five percent tax rate, projected tax rate increase, well under any goals of two or three percent that either I have or the council had. The only other change that occurred last Thursday was that the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority voted to request the thirty thousand dollars of operating funding from both cities, Montpelier and Berry. Our share of that thirty thousand dollars would be fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And we have no, the council has no say on that ballot item. The authority as a municipality has the right, if you will, a prerogative to have that placed on the ballot. And if that's, not if it's on the ballot, but assuming it's on the ballot and if it passes, it would raise the projected tax rate from one point four five percent to one point six one percent. So it's a very minor increase. So that's the only changes that have occurred since you saw this last at the workshop. From my perspective as manager, this is a very reasonable and responsible proposal. It's responsive to both staff needs and council needs or priorities directives. So my recommendation to the council is that the council, you know, and we support this, whether you formally vote to adopt it tonight or next Tuesday, which will be the last opportunity. You've got to set the budget at that time. So that's my overview and recommendation.
Sure, so before I call on counselors, I just wanted to make sure to give an opportunity for anyone else from the public that is here that has questions. If you have those, feel free to raise your hand or otherwise let us know. A hearing and seeing none, Counselor Booth.
So I'll state what I said last week, which is, I think that, you know, we've got four positions in this budget and granted, I, you know, it went down another half percent with the errors and omissions being removed. But given the circumstances, I I think we should look, I and and I understand that the this count, the council is not interested in doing it, but I I still think we should entertain a zero percent increase and possibly remove some of the positions to get there. You know, I I heard, I saw a budget prepared by somebody and it was zero percent, which had removed the DPW assistant, put the money over into the streets, actually into the streets instead of having it on an assistant, which, you know, the comment is always that we don't have enough money to pave our streets, but we have enough to do it in assistant BPW, remove the planner position and maintain the custodian in IT and still came up to zero percent. And it was a two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I think, from the the actual surplus. But I I understand that, you know, I'm alone on this, I'm just concerned that I think we are. I I just, I don't know, I, you know, four, four positions and, you know, on the horizon, it sounds like we're moving towards a fifth next year putting the BADC in-house, you know, that kind of comment is, that's prepping us for a possible additional staff person coming on. So I just, I think that, you know, that's a problem, but it it is what it is. And I will say that on the future agenda, Mayor Herring, I'd like to see a conversation about leaving the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. And I just dropped that bomb, I'm sorry.
Well, for that last comment first, we've already asked and reached out to our representative to come in and give an update or overview. I think it's also been on the agenda in Montpelier to have a discussion if they wanted to remain as members of the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. So both Montpelier and Berry elected not to, basically they have no paying members. Maybe they would, maybe they still have the fire, but I don't see them as listed as a district that pays for fees.
But there is a process and a timeline which wouldn't allow us to get out from under the vote this year.
Counselor, I will have some follow up comments for you, Counselor Booth, afterward, but Counselor Wasisak.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I said last week, and I'll say again here, that a zero percent budget sounds nice, but it is just not, it's not responsible governance, it's not fiscally responsible, and it's just not realistic. There are still so many folks who are hurting and who are struggling and who are have not financially recovered from the ongoing economic upheaval caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic. But it takes people and it takes money to run a responsible, responsive municipal government in twenty twenty-two. And these are for staff positions that we heard over and over again from staff that are needed to help run the city the way that this community expects the city to be run. So I think that we have done a great job as a council. I think staff has done a great job in putting together a proposal that invests in the future needs of the city and does that at a very responsible, less than two percent proposal for the voters. And I think what this budget shows is that we can make smart, strategic, long-term investments in the community. And we can do it in a financially responsible way by taking advantage of the financial resources that are available to us from the federal government and just by good governance. And I think that that's what this budget shows. So I'm very excited for this budget and I'm very, very hopeful and optimistic that it will pass on top meeting day.
Thank you. Counselor Stockwell.
I want to echo Counselor Wasisak and just say that I think we we've heard time and time again how how strapped the staff are. It seems like it would be so irresponsible not to do something to make their jobs more possible. And we hear that our salaries aren't always competitive and if we want people here, we've got to pay them. If we want the city to not to continue shrinking, we've got to invest in development. I don't know how we do that otherwise. But Counselor Booth, last year you made the motion to pass a budget that had a two point one percent increase. And it seems like that year was much more shaky than this year is. So, you know, have you just had a sea change or you think? Why invest?
Sure, I'll reiterate what I said last week, which is the comments are due to feedback that I've gotten from people that I represent. You know, I'm not, you know, I'm not here to push my own agendas on things. I I feel a responsibility for representing the people that, you know, elect me. So that's the reason why I'm pushing back on the budget. Now, that's, that's fine. Out of, I'm not, I'm not in a majority on this, so I just have to make the statement and that's the end of it.
Thank you.
So I I just wanted to make comments on the positions themselves. Those four positions were ones that were presented by our staff. And and I'm going to also relate it back to the governor's budget address that was given today. Three main points that he made in there were about jobs, about housing and about infrastructure. So if we think about jobs, we we also know that we've had some vacancy savings and that's related to what we've seen in our surpluses, I mean, it's a correlation. We have our HR director that is doing IT needs. We just talked about tonight about the ongoing issues that we have with audio here with a position that is needed. We know that. If we want more of the project list that Rick is working on, I'm sure he gladly prepare that for for us. But related to that jobs, I mean, we we can't even have a person in-house that can help with the amount of HR recruitment that's needed. We're currently in a manager search too, so just I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of those types of things. Housing was another big push, the planning position that is within the budget. We we also propose ARCA using about one million or forty percent of those funds. That position is going to be pivotal for that type of work. It's also going to be pivotal to make sure that we are taking advantage as much as possible for the city and its residents to take advantage of those programs. So we want to make sure that we have positions in place for that. Similarly, for infrastructure, that that's why that assistant DPW position is so key. I mean, it's the same thing if you go through the the budget of the governor's budget address talks about, you know, I'll put it together, the fifteen million for construction homes, twenty-five million for transforming rundown and vacant units and deliverable homes, a hundred and five million for portable mixed income housing. And then further on, he speaks to seventy-two million more for water, sewer and stormwater infrastructure. So in order for us to best leverage those types of external funds, we need the positions in-house. It was spoken to before as maybe we need a grant position, a person that raised that those grants, but all three of those types of positions can assist in the grant writing as well. And then lastly, the the cleaning one is one that staff has advocated for because you come to City Hall and you just take a look at it and and I think that can speak for itself. But for those of you that are just on Zoom, the building doesn't get cleaned. It really should. And then when you're talking about a time period like COVID, where housing and the cleanliness of housing is is necessary, we got to make sure that our staff is taken care of too. So those are the four positions that are listed that we're speaking to. I just wanted to make sure that people are clear of why those are in the budget.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for any of the other councils, so.
No, I'm, I'm disappointed that at this late date, the request is being made to revamp when we're getting a very clear deadline. And I do hope that we unanimously accept the budget.
But, yeah. You know, I I respect where Counselor Booth is coming from, but I would, I would say that what he's hearing from is a very small group of constituents within the city. I don't think we should let a small group of constituents, whatever they recommend, provide the direction for the rest of the community. I think that I'm more than willing to have this proposal put to the voters. Let the, let the, let the voters of the city decide whether they think this is a responsible budget or not. This is probably one of the lesser tax rate increases we've had in the eleven years I've been here. Notwithstanding the the times we're in, it's a very responsible proposal. I think we let the voters decide. You know, there's, I I can tell you before you even open the polls, there's probably at least five hundred people that are going to oppose this budget. But there, hopefully, there will be twelve hundred to fifteen hundred that will support it. So I think the responsible thing to do is put this proposal to the voters and let the voters decide that I'm more than willing to.
Yeah, one last thought, well, two comments, you know. Recognizing Counselor Wasisak. One is when we've talked about the rate of inflation, historically, this council has looked at that and tried to make sure that we're at or below that rate. And we are four times under the rate of inflation with what we are proposing. So I I just want to put that perspective. The other perspective, I did speak to one of the select board members up in Essex today. They're looking at a four point something percent increase. Look at neighboring Montpelier, the last I heard is much higher than that. So when you do the comparison of what we are actually doing compared to what other communities are, I think we're, we're actually doing probably disservice by as low of a number that we have. But I'm still willing to support it because of that seen balance that's needed to make sure that we can have an affordable budget for our community members. Counselor Wasisak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. All that said, I will make the motion to approve the budget and send it to the voters. Or however that needs to be worded.
So it's moved and seconded, basically approving the amount to be raised by taxes. This is not the approval of the warning that comes next week, but it's just making sure that we have that amount. And usually we have the the dollar amount that's read off as part of that motion. So.
So the the expenses, if I'm reading this correctly, is thirteen thousand, thirteen million, one ninety-four, one fifty-nine?
Yes.
And the amount to be raised by taxes is nine million, five seventy-nine, two seventy-four.
Correct.
And that will be reflected on the warning next week.
Trying with the.
And there there was a second, so moved and seconded. So under further discussion, Counselor Hemrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lower my hand. Yeah, I remember, I remember having a conversation with Counselor Booth early, early in my first year, my first of this term. And where he told me, you know, I always, I always listen to Steve, I always take Steve's recommendation. And and it's, and it seems like year after year, budget after budget, he's been a supporter of of the budgets, but but not, but not this year. And and I, and and I think that's potentially too bad because it's easy to be, you know, that kid at the beach that likes to kick down the sandcastle, right? It's a lot harder to be part of the team that builds the sandcastle. And that, you know, that takes compromise. And I, and I'm, I'm really pleased where where this council landed in that not everybody got what they thought was best for their constituents. And we all are here representing constituents. Nobody has a monopoly on constituents. Everybody's here doing the best job that they can do for the voters. And and the voters ultimately get to decide whether or not we're doing, we're we're doing the job. And and this budget, I think, faces some really cold, hard realities that we got to stop kicking the can down the road. We got to stop the short-termism because people drive around this city and they they feel under-maintained streets under their tires, they feel under-maintained sidewalks under the towers, they see crooked fencing at the parks, they see shingles falling off municipal buildings. Heck, even in the the Public Works Building, you can see sunshine through the ceiling. You can see it in the Wheelock House, it's under maintained, but we maintain these liabilities that add biggest. You can see it in the Wheelock House. It's under maintained, but we maintain these liabilities that add bigger, deeper into a hole every single year. And, um, and and it, and this budget recognizes that that's got to change, that there has to be a fundamental shift in the way the city operates, uh, to get ahead of the curve. And, uh, and and for all the reasons, um, that the mayor said and other councillors have said, I, you know, I, I, I think this is a time not to be, um, pound foolish, or penny wise and pound foolish. Um, it's a time to, to start making the changes, the the capacity changes, um, to do the long-term planning and to put the long-term financial sustainability uh, of of the city first. And 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 so I I I'm, I'm, I'll support this budget.
Councilor Booton?
Yeah, a part of me wants to say, how dare you say that I'm kicking sandcastles down, but, you know, whatever. I will say that the money that we're talking about for the positions will not pay for the the fences being fixed. They will not pay for the holes in the public safety of the, the build, or not public safety, but the the DPW building. They will not pay for all those things. They're paying for admin positions. And with all due respect to the conversation about having, you know, a compromise, uh, the entire budget process, when I made the comment about the four positions, uh, I was, the the answer was no, not even a question about that. And the only compromise that I saw during the entire budget process with this council is the 50,000 that we're taking out of the surplus. So with all due respect, which, you know, whatever, uh, that's not an accurate comment that you made. And regarding the time in which this is being brought forth, our first budget meeting was on December 4th. Second one was on two, on the 18th. We had Christmas and New Year's. I asked the question in between there. And on the 4th, I brought it up and I had actually reached out to Steve prior to that to let him know where I was standing on it. So, uh, you know, the the comments that are being made are not appropriate, and that's fine. I wouldn't expect any better. So with that, I say we call the question.
So I I just got to make some some other notes here because, uh, funny for.
I called the question.
I I don't hear a second. Is there a second to any questions? So, um, the DPW building, um, the funds for that are are something that we're going to talk about. I think it's part of the uh, the overall needs of the city, um, and and how we can actually address funds for that. Uh, some of the other compromises were about the use of the ARCA funds. I know that some councillors were not interested in using those as part of the the plan to get to where we are, which is the 1.6 one. Um, and prior to those budget meeting sessions, we did have with every department head, so six separate presentations, their presentation of what they needed and how much that would be equating to within our process. So we actually started well before we ever have. Um, and if I remember correctly, there was also, um, email, uh, information that the manager had to respond to. And it took them quite a bit of time, uh, with a number of questions that came from Councilor Hammer. So, uh, there has been a lot of conversation on the budget, uh, probably more so this year than any time that I've been on council. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I'm not defending one person or the other, but I just want to make sure that those facts are out. So with that, we do have the motion. Is there any further conversation? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed nay?
Nay.
And I just noted.
And I believe for proper, uh, process with regards to a hybrid meeting like this, if it's not unanimous, we do have to do it as a.
We do have to do a roll call. You're absolutely right. So as that roll call, we'll, uh, I'll just go around the room first and then resume. Councilor Shombel?
Aye.
I am an aye.
Aye.
Well, it's an aye. Uh, Councilor Hammer?
Aye.
Councilor Booton?
Nay.
And Councilor Wasak?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that.
You forgot me.
Oh, Councilor Reel, thank you.
Aye. I I'm, I'm an aye.
Usually you're here, so I just, sometimes it's skip and I shouldn't. I'm sorry about that. Okay, Council?
Mr. Mayor, could we just have a reminder that the chat for, and it looks like, uh, Rich Maury and Captain Josh Howard um, continue to talk in the chat when that's not, unless it's not consistent with our rules.
If you have comments, uh, please feel free to speak up. And if not, is there anything inappropriate though? I just want to make sure of that too, because we also have a rule that if it's, uh, uh, inappropriate stuff, then we need to remind people not to have inappropriate comments. Okay, Bernadette, I see your hand is up.
Yes, um, I don't know if you would call it inappropriate, but it's, it's not chat. That should be, it's commentary. And it's unfavorable commentary. And that's if they want to speak up, I don't know why they don't raise their hands and say something rather than running the chat. Thank you.
Some people might not have the ability to, so we have to make sure they have the option. I just don't know what the comments are because the computer's not in front of me. So that's why I wanted to make sure if it was, uh, proper or improper.
No, they're not. They're not contributing and they're not asking. They're just running commentary.
So if there's nothing to add to this conversation then? Councilor Maury? Or, oh, Mr. Maury, former Councilor Maury?
Yeah, before I get slandered any further, I just want to say my commentary was actually about the Wheelock House. And I simply said that the value of the property was based on what the restrictions per our were, were that council put on it were. And that was, uh, two topics ago, so I don't know why I'm being brought into this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So with hearing nothing else on the budget, we move on to item nine F, which is the discussion on the proposed charter changes for 2022 town meeting. Uh, Council, we do have an A for form in front of us. I believe it came out today from our attorney Oliver. Uh, and if those of you that are, uh, remote, you should have that in your email as well.
No, that's not it. I didn't print out a copy. That's what I was just going, damn.
Uh, well, does everyone have the ability for a copy? I don't, Sam, do you have your email in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, and I just want to note this, uh, does everybody remote for, uh, Council at least have those updated copies that have notes? I'm going to read them out as we go anyway. So, uh, for those that, uh, members of the public that may not have had the information, uh, we can make sure that we do speak to those items. So is that fine with Council? Moving forward in that way. Uh, Mr. Maury, your hand is up. Is that for another comment?
Sorry, I forgot to take it down. Also.
I haven't printed out.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that I go through and then I.
Yeah, yeah.
These items. So, uh, with that, I just want final confirmation, councillors online, you you have the ability to see it as well? Thumbs up? Okay, so what we have is, uh, we have the responses from our city attorney along with the comments. You'll see that the original writing is in yellow. You'll see green comments that are from Oliver. And if you want, we can go through them one by one.
I I I hope, I tried to put it in such a way, I mean, I put the whole letter from Oliver at the back, but I tried to put it in such a way that's not.
No, no.
I tried to put it in such a way to sort of show, um, the the sections together, what what council has been discussing. And then, um, what Oliver suggested, uh, in the few places where he made suggestions for, um, changes in language, so.
So plenty of notes, just these were two copies of the same.
No, they're not.
This is for.
Oh.
So that's why I made sure that.
Oh, right. That's one of them, what was at our places. Yes.
So, so the first one, just to to go over, this is the general corporate powers. This is section of 104, and we were originally having language that says, uh, any acquiring or conveying of property through the means listed in the section shall require approval of the council. And there's two suggestions that Oliver had provided. And really it was just to make sure that it was clear that any advance was adhering to the requirements of VSA 1061 title out of 24.
Or not. Basically, it's, it is, his, uh, comments were to, um, suggest that the council clarify whether their intention is to, um, act outside of the statute or be in compliance with the statute. Remembering that charter language ultimately becomes statute.
So there are two suggested, uh, pieces of language there, and I just wanted to make sure council sees those. Uh, the second one is, is basically taking the original language and adding on a sentence on the end, uh, which says, and shall also be subject to notice as required by 24 VSA 1061 or any successor provision. So that does include that adherence. Uh, the first suggestion was rewriting it a little bit. And this is any acquiring or conveying of property through the means listed in this section shall require only the approval of the council. No further or additional approvals or reviews, i.e., and then this says what we are omitting, shall be required to authorize the real estate events under this section. And I think the intent was actually to add more, uh, so that the second bit of language is what the intent was. But, um, Councilor Hammer, since you had proposed this, I I think I'll look to you to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, could you re, could you rephrase the question? I I lost my place.
Of course. On that document, um, the first, along with your language, the first, uh, proposed language from the attorney was basically saying our language be, would be in place, but not be in compliance with 24 VSA 1061. And the second bit of language was basically saying the opposite, that we would acquire or convey property through the means listed in this section, meaning the added language for easements, and it shall require the approval of council, um, which I think that that's the point that you were trying to make. But also, and shall be subject to notice and requirements by 24 VSA 1061 or any successor provision. Yeah, I think you're trying to put more provisions around this rather than me and Lu of the original provisions that brought there, correct?
Yeah, but I have to say, I don't, I don't completely follow the, the, the the summary from Oliver Tombley, but, um, but I can say that the intention is, is that that there should be a a check and balance, a safeguard against the, um, uh, the, the sale or purchase of easements. And, and so whatever he thinks is the, the right way to get to that, um, to the, that outcome is, is the intention.
Sure. So to try to clarify that a little bit more, um, the 24 VSA also says that notice of intent to conveying municipal real estate has to be published in the newspaper, giving the voters an opportunity, the objection to proposed advance. So those are the types of provisions that are currently in statute. And that's why I'm saying, I think what you're trying to do is make sure that this is in addition to those types of items rather than in lieu of, correct?
Yes.
So if that's the understanding of council, then what we would be looking at is the number two, uh, language from Oliver. And I'm, I'm looking around to see if anybody's objecting to that.
Yep, no, that makes sense to me.
Okay. So moving on to the next one, uh, section 307, this is the powers of the city and we'd be removing grandeur. There is no comments from the attorney. And are we still good with removing the grandeur? Okay. Uh, under section 407, this is appointments, uh, and there was no, uh, comments from the city attorney on this either. Uh, was the inspector of plumbing, that basically was not a position that we would have under that appointment section. Okay, the next one is a little bit more lengthy, and and this has to do with the, uh, addition of section 409 capital improvement program in budget. Uh, just stating what's written here, he would suggest to go with something closer to, uh, the version A, which is in the document. His concern with version B is that it recites to statutory language 24 VSA 4430, and that section arises under chapter 117, which is related to municipal and regional planning and development. If nothing else, he thinks it might be somewhat confusing to relate or to compare to a charter section, creating a budget for capital improvement responsibility for the city manager and taking in some sort of authority from statute that governs in another area. So he has, uh, proposed version A in the section below. I can read that all out unless council is.
It seems good. To me. It seems, it seems a clear statement of what you want that plan to accomplish. The version A seems fine to me.
Okay, and that, just for those that are remote, that's the section that's in green. Uh, again, those, that's what, um, the attorney has provided for. Any objections to that? Okay, hearing seen none? We then have the section 501. Uh, again, this is related to creation of an organization. So it has the removal of the plumbing section and the plumbing inspector. Want to make sure there's nothing concerns there. There is no comments from the attorney. Moving on to section 605, this is what we currently have in our charter for the local rooms, meals, alcohol, beverage options tax. Uh, it is adding in the word sales as we know. The comment, uh, was, he didn't have, uh, any real comments, but he issued the following section. Seems straightforward. As to any possible surplus funds, you should always keep in mind that the interplay between the proposed provision in section 601B of the charter, to make sure that any reserve funds fall within the parameters as outlined in that section.
Which isn't really relevant to this because this is not dealing with the, the surplus. It's dealing with the, the money to be allocated for streets, sidewalks, capital equipment, capital improvement.
Right. And and just to reiterate, so within the section that we have for provision, the new language would say the capital improvement needs under section 409 anyway, so this specified that location versus the section 601. Councilor Wasak?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking at the agenda. Is this the correct place to talk about the local options tax?
Um, yes. Well, it relates to this, but, um, do you have anything for the charter language for this? And that would be yes. If you have more to the budgeted use, then we can wait until that next section.
No, I don't have any more for the budgeted use. Um, I'm going to make the recommendation, um, that we remove this language and that we don't put forward a 1% sales tax, uh, to the voters. I have been a proponent of this tax, and quite frankly, I think it's a good idea. I don't think it very much hurts the bottom line, and I think it would be a useful revenue stream to the city. Um, and I have heard from a great deal of people who support the budget. I have not heard from anybody, frankly, uh, who's not a member of council or member of staff. Uh, I have not heard from any constituents that are supportive of the 1% sales tax. And I think we have a really, really good budget. I think it makes smart investments, and I really want to get that over the line. And I think that, uh, taking down the local options tax, uh, goes, i- i- it's a message of good faith to the voters and to constituents that we are being responsible, uh, while also, you know, standing by what I think is a very good budget. So that's a recommendation I would make, um, and I understand that this is something that is coming up at the last minute. Um, but like I said, I have, I've heard from a good number of constituents who support the budget. I have not had anyone tell me that they are in support of a local options tax this time.
Okay, other comments on the language to be included? Uh, Councilor Booton?
Well, I've decided to support, no, I'm just kidding. I I would agree with Councilor Wasak on this. But, uh, regarding the other charter changes, um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight them. I think that we should warn next week for 104, the option two, I think it was, 307, 407, 409, version A, and 501. I think that's the way it should go down for the warning next week. Um, and that is excluding, uh, local options tax. So it doesn't say action for the charter changes. So I don't know if we can do a motion to have those warned for next week.
Well, they would be on the, uh, warning next week. This is to make sure that everyone is still saying, we, these are the items that we want. And from both of our comments and Councilor Wasak's comments, it sounds like you're fine with all the items to be there except for the local, uh, you're fine with all the items to be there except for the local, the change of our local options tax to include sales.
Correct. As long as they're, the number two, I think it was. I might be wrong on that, but I'm pretty sure it was number two. Some reason I didn't put that on my notes. And version A.
It was option two for the 104, section 104, and it was option A for section 409.
Okay, so under discussion, Mr. Lozan?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And I'd have to agree with councillor Booton and councillor Wazak. And by the way, councillor Wazak, I don't know if I ever emailed you and thanked you for taking the time to reach out to me and suggest that you and I had a coffee, and I think you prefaced that by saying, "I know about you, but I don't really know you, and I'd like to sit down and have a coffee." So I just want to let you know I thoroughly enjoyed that coffee. There's plenty that you and I don't agree on, but I think we found some common ground, and that's a great start. And so tonight, we have this common ground. Mayor, I'm not in favor of the local sales tax, and there's a reason. I was a huge champion of the meals and rooms tax, because generally speaking, when folks are deciding to go out to one of our great restaurants and enjoy a meal that might cost $60 or $80, those folks generally, and I'm saying generally, generally speaking, they're not having to make tough choices in their life. But that single mom whose washing machine breaks, if you add a 1% sales tax, you're making it more difficult for her to replace that. We've heard a lot of talk about growing the grand list. Well, if you add a 1% sales tax, guess what? It's more difficult to grow the grand list, and it's more costly. We've talked a lot about housing. Well, if you're spending $100,000 at the lumberyard, you've just added a 1% sales tax or $1,000, so now that homeowner is making a choice to maybe buy their washer or dryer elsewhere. So, you know, for that reason, Mayor, I just don't support, and I never have supported, because we debated it thoroughly, the local sales tax, because I think it runs counterintuitive to the things that we're trying to accomplish and the things that the council is trying to accomplish. So thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you. Other comments? Councillor Hemrick?
Just know, we all got an email from a ward two resident, I think made a good point in that that the capital plan is, our capital budgeting program is not done. And so the voters do not have really clear and strong assurance that what this would fund would be items that they would support. So I thought it was, I thought it was a good point, and I think it would be much, this question would make more sense if the voters know, had a real clarity about what they were getting on the other side of it. And that's not to say that investments in infrastructure aren't incredibly important or clearly needed. It's just we don't have them prioritized yet. And it costs when we don't plan for long-term infrastructure investments. Like, I know everybody is getting that five-year, 20% annual increase in their sewer rate from a big dig bill, right? An unexpected big dig bill. Through all of our water sewer bills, right up, and everybody noticed it, and people are talking about it. And that's because there's not long-term planning right now, the instruments in place that need to be in place for capital budgeting and programming. And that's what a new public works position can do for the city. That's what a new planning position can do, can help us stop digging a hole. But I agree with councillor Wazak and councillor Booton that postponing this question and really doing it the right way so that the voters know what are they going to get in capital equipment and capital improvement and sidewalk reconstruction and street reconstruction. So I think the timing is not right for this.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Well, so I just wanted to make sure on that before we get into the actual item, which is next on the agenda. So they kind of do intertwine. If council will so be inclined, if there's no other discussion on any other items on here, we can make sure that that the rest of those charter changes are addressed, and I think we're all in agreement there. And then we can have kind of a combined conversation on what is on that language for charter, but also have the conversation, the information provided from the packet. So if nobody's objective, I'll make sure I can turn that over to Steve, and he can provide any more information.
Yeah, I just started before Steve started, just, do we need a motion, or is that what's gonna happen next?
I think if there is any motion, we would just, we can take that after this discussion, because they play together.
Yeah, I apologize. I meant to have this discussion before we got into the charter changes, and I missed read the agenda. I quit before the approval of draft warning, and that's where I thought it was, and the charter changes would come up, and so I didn't mean to get the character for the force. That said, as manager, and I guess I'm beginning to see probably the lone wolf here, I strongly recommend the council put this on the ballot. Councillor Hemrick spoke to kicking the can down the road. As far as I'm concerned, that's exactly what you're doing. Don't put it on the ballot. This, and I also disagree, councillor Hemrick, that voters don't know what they're voting for. We have that information on the website. We have a capital equipment plan that the council has approved that shows there's a need of a half a million dollars to a million dollars a year over the next 10 years. This isn't make believe. It's there in black and white. People can see it if they want to, if they want to look for it. I understand it will be a significant challenge, or at least me as manager, if I'm a lone wolf, to sell this if the voters, if the council puts it on the ballot. But the need is there now. This is, I don't know what voters expect. This is an alternative revenue mechanism. It does not add to the tax rate. It is a minor burden, if you will, for a lot of people who, you know, are have discretionary expenses. I realize not everybody knows. This is, this is a a real aid to senior property owners who are on fixed income. They won't pay a cent for this unless they, they're not gonna pay a cent for it in their property taxes. The more I think about it, I really think it's a no-brainer, especially in terms of what the city's needs are. Kicking that can down, you know, it may take you a couple, three times to get this passed, just like it did the sales tax. I could go on and on. The packet that I put together, I thought was pretty comprehensive. I think the justification is there. If you don't, if you don't, if the voters don't approve this alternative revenue mechanism, where are, where is this council and future councils going to get the revenue to pay for the infrastructure needs that, and the equipment? Without that kind of revenue, we're going to be faced with crisis purchases of stuff that just fails, and we have no choice, but we've got to go out and get it, buy it, and then figure out what we're going to pay for. I think it's a strategic mistake not to put this on the ballot and do the best job we can of supporting it and explaining why it makes sense.
So just to know, you're not going to be a lone wolf. I might be outvoted tonight on this, and that's fine if I am, but I'm going to stick by what we see now is a 3.18 cent increase in our local tax, and that's the 1.61%. If we were to add 750,000 to our tax base, that's another 14 cents. So you're basically saying you wanted five times the amount more, and that's basically what we'd get to over time without having that local sales tax. And that's what, one thing that we've always heard complained about is that there's too much, it's too high of a tax rate for the city. And when we're talking about sustainability, we would have to do something like that for revenue source to get there. And also, as Steve noted, all the components of what we're going to be looking for, for that overall capital plan, those components are all on the website right now. They're just not in one place. So if a future council wants to delegate one project or another, they can. And really, one of the things that I've always wanted to see happen is the VPW building. These are the funds where we could get that in place, so that later on down the road, if there was a bond request, we're not going out and asking for more money. We're going out and asking for the funds that come directly from the funds that we've already had allocated from the voters for something like a sales tax. So, you know, it's either it's going to be now or it's going to be later. We're going to be seeing people fight about it for years to come, and I'm willing to stick by this and move forward. Councillor Shumbo?
Two things. With these charter pieces, is each one separately put on the ballot? Yes, okay. So, I mean, I, I'm I worry that that could be a distraction for the budget for folks, and that they vote the budget down as a result of it. But on the other hand, it gives them the option to state their opinion and say yea or nay to the whole thing. And I hope that if that's the case, that people can see that the budget is one thing, that it's necessary, it's what's going to run the city. And a local options tax is their choice to vote up or down. And at least they get the opportunity.
Councillor Shumbo?
I also think that the voters should have the opportunity, and it's important for Barry to invest. You know, it's also people coming into the city to shop. It's, you know, it hits people in very small ways, from people who are coming to use the city, people who live in the city, and it goes to improve what badly need. So I think it gives a lift to Barry, and, you know, we keep talking about the things that we need. So I think it's, the voters get to decide. It's their option.
So in the material that was sent out from the manager, just wanted to note a couple of, you know, there's misperceptions or myths that are out there. And we actually went through some of this when we did this the first time with meals and alcohol. And when we did it with rooms, meals, and alcohol, we actually, we used an amount because it was based on Zippo, so it wasn't able to raise the amount that we thought. The Department of Tax website now actually has the information by municipality, so that's one thing that's a change. Another thing to know, if you look in that table one, which is in the local option sales tax information, you'll see table one and table two that are included along with it. The amount that it says to be raised is actually closer to $1 million. The reason why we're using the $750,000 number is, we want to make sure that there is no other glitches like we had in the past. So we're not pitching something that ends up being a little bit less. And I think the comparative number was already thrown out, is about 150,000 that we raised from the rooms, meals, and alcohol. So this would be an amount that's about five times that. And that's why you'd see such a big impact on the tax rate if we were having to do that in a different way. So I'm not going to read all of the items on there, but I just did want to point out that, and table two was the other item, just to know. Because some of the myths were that this is only done in places where towns are visited by people from outside. You know, they're the ski resort type towns. But out of municipalities on here, you're going to see that there's 16 of them. One of them, the metadata was provided because there's too few businesses, so it's a way of identifying where the revenue is coming from. So the other ones, they're out of the 15, two of them have seen decreases, which are between 1.6 and 5.6%. The others have seen increases. So the other, doing my math here, 13 of them. And those range from anywhere between a 6% increase up to a 65.7% increase in sales in those communities. So if they're talking about the tax impacting businesses, it really doesn't show that in the data. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. You'll see places like various, St. Albans City versus St. Albans Town. So when you're talking about those different dynamics that are similar to here, both of those saw an increase in the change of retail sales in both of those locations, and they actually both have the local options tax in place for sales. So that was the information. It's in your packets. Councillor Wazak, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I would just add that I agree with pretty much all of the substance that the mayor and the city manager just laid out. We do get complaints, and there are large, large infrastructure needs for the city. And I hope that next year inflation won't be as bad. I hope that next year we won't be in the middle of an ongoing pandemic. And next year, we won't have to go to the voters and ask for a new tax while also spending $1 million of ARPA money on infrastructure needs. And so I just want, I want the mayor and the manager to know that I understand and agree with all the analysis that you all have done. I just also think that as, in being responsive to my constituents, I just don't think it's the right environment right now. I think that people are still hurting, and that goes for our small businesses as well.
Councillor Hemrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would just reiterate that I absolutely hear everything you're saying and what manager McKenzie's saying. But I do think in the next year, we can focus on the unspent bond money and the, and the $1 million in ARPA, and getting the capital budget and program done. And then be in a much stronger position to make the case on why this is a, this is a good revenue source that can help us get ahead of capital needs. But I think we should focus on getting those monies out the door first.
Councillor Booton?
So I just want to be clear that I, like councillor Wazak, I mean, I know that there's a need out there for the money. I think it's a timing issue. I don't think it's the best time to do this. I will say that next year would be probably a lot better, because I think Berlin is actually going to do a local options tax. Not saying I would support it then, but certainly for, you know, for the average individual, seeing that everybody else has one. But then again, maybe that would be like a benefit for folks to say, oh, well, everybody else has one, but Barry doesn't. Let's go shop there. You know, I don't know if that's gonna make that much of a difference, but I think we'll see.
So are there any other questions for the local options tax and the approval of sales? And just to reiterate what it says on the agenda, it's just a discussion or decision to warn the local options tax ballot item. And we can do this because the conjunction is actually with the item that was on the agenda before this, and this was proposed charter changes for the 2022 town meeting day. So in essence, it is, I think, getting back to what two councillors had already noted, moving forward the items for next week, which would be all of the items except for the local options tax. And if that's one way, or if somebody else wants to make a vote the other way, which is to approve all of the items that we're discussing. I don't think the first person that puts their hand up. Councillor Booton?
Yeah, I think we should separate the two, because I don't think there's a lot of pushback on the other charter changes. So I would say we'll take them in separate motions. So I'll make a motion to approve the 104, number two, 307, 407, 409, version A, and 501 to be worn for next week.
So that's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you seconded it.
The councillor...
That was me.
Any further discussion? Again, I like everything else that's on here. I would be an advocate for this one, so I'm going to be voting no. But next week...
I'm suggesting that we take the local options tax separately.
No, I know, and I'm looking to vote them all together, so I will still vote no, noting that. So all those in favor? Yeah, I'm going to do a roll call, because you already know there's going to be one no vote. So councillor Booton?
Aye.
Councillor Hemrick?
Aye.
Wazak?
Aye.
Councillor Reel?
Aye.
Council Shambel?
Aye.
And Council Stopwell?
Aye.
And so I'm the one no, that's fine. Uh, is there any other motion based on the items for town meeting day for the charter changes? And seeing that the other one was not included, that's why I made sure that my vote was noted beforehand, because I didn't think that there would be an actual vote for this one. So, okay, so moving on, unless anybody else has any other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to, uh, the item H, which is review the draft annual town meeting warning. And I'll turn this one over to the city clerk.
So, um, I put the draft warning in your packets, um, a- as is required by statute. It will be approved at next week's meeting. Uh, it has to be worn at least 30 and not more than 40 days before town meeting. And so next week's meeting is in the window. It's the only regularly scheduled meeting that's in the window. Um, we will, looking through the, the articles, um, obviously, Article One, I will fill in the, the budget information, um, as was approved by council this evening. Um, Article Two, I will fill in the $391,500, um, that's included uh, in the, uh, the manager's budget proposal numbers for street reconstructions, reconstruction and sidewalk improvements. Uh, I will make the updates that council has approved with regards to the charter changes. Um, I need to make a change, I need to make an update to Article Three, uh, Article Five, Six. And then I will remove Article Eight, the local option tax article. Um, and I don't believe there are any other changes unless councillors have, um, comments or changes that they'd like to see with Articles Nine and Ten.
There's any other changes? Just looking around to make sure. And, and council, just so you're aware, we have the discussion tonight. I do intend to vote yes next week. I'm not going to have any of the items that are on the ballot to be something that would hold me back. Um, since we had the discussion tonight, I'm hoping that next week ends up being that way for all of us. We've had our say tonight, uh, and hopefully we can go forward with a unanimous vote next week. Hearing and seeing no other conversation? Well, we are at roundtable. Do you need anything for, uh, for this session? Okay, noting that, I'll start with the screen. Council Booton, do you have anything for roundtable?
Nope.
Counciler Hammer?
I just want to thank all the people that have gotten their first vaccine, second vaccine, and booster vaccine. I think they're making this, this, uh, this Omicron spike, uh, much worse than it, than it could have been. Um, and it, I think it's a great way to show our healthcare professionals that, um, we're thinking about them and we're thinking about our neighbors and coworkers. Um, and, uh, and so I, I just appreciate all the people that have, um, have, uh, gotten the shot and, uh, and are, are keeping, keeping Vermont strong.
Thank you, Council Wazak?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I felt, so acknowledging yesterday, uh, which was Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, and I found out yesterday that Martin Luther King Junior, Betty White, and Michelle Obama all share a birthday. And something about that just makes me smile. I think that's really cool. Uh, and just, I, I would encourage folks to do a lot of, uh, reading, some educating of themselves about the history of Dr. King. Um, he was, uh, he was a civil rights leader, but he understood the need to be incivil and the need to create good trouble and the need to step up and make a principled stand, uh, for what he believed in and what is the right thing to do. He was a proponent of abolishing the filibuster for voting rights in 1965, which is something that is very relevant to us now. Uh, so I would just encourage folks to do some good reading, get in some good trouble for Dr. King.
Thank you. Council Rio?
Um, I just like to thank, uh, the citizens of Barry and the community for reaching out to me, um, texting me, emailing me, calling me, um, saying, I have an extra coat, I have an extra pair of winter boots. I found some socks on sale. Where can I bring them? Where can I send them? Can you pick them up? Can I drop them off? It's been really cold. Um, last week I wasn't able to attend council because I work late keeping, um, a warming space open for folks. Um, but please continue to blow up my phone, blow up my email, blow up my texts. Um, it's still cold out there. There are still people in need. And I am willing to pick up. I am willing to stay late. I am willing to do anything to make sure that people aren't cold. And please, if you have extra socks, extra boots, um, clean, um, gently used, please, um, you know, get ahold of somebody, get ahold of a church, get ahold of Good Sam, get ahold of a shelter. It's, it's really in need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Shambel?
I pass. I'll pass. Did Council Booton pass or?
He was first.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I just wanted to note is, uh, I know the legislation is contingent right now, but my intent would still be to have in-person next week either way. Uh, we have the town, uh, meeting day warning. I want to make sure that we have every opportunity for anyone to come in, speak their mind as they needed to. Um, after that, if council does elect to move forward with a, uh, fully hybrid model, um, you know, we can take that up too, but I just want to make sure that we get through next week in person, just in case. I mean, we didn't have anybody show up tonight, but, um, never know that, that last meeting.
Well, at the best, it would only be on the agenda next week, so the meeting would be before that action was taken, if the governor decides to do it.
Uh, and I don't have anything else to add, so with that, I'll just look for motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in there, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? Okay, thank you very much. I'll take that as unanimous, and have a good night, everybody. Take care.
Good night, all.